And she's gone.
Hi, you've reached Lisa Parker. Sorry I can't take your call.
She rejoined the attending?
Mm-hmm, I am. Hello?
Hello?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Not through here. We can hear her. We can hear her through the system.
It's coming through the speakers, but she just needs to maybe speak up a little bit.
We can hear you barely through the system, so if you speak up just a little bit more, we'll be able to hear you.
Can you hear me? I just turned up the volume on my phone. Did that help?
It does.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get this work session started on the city of Soldatna Water and Wastewater Rate Study. And turn it over. Who's going to start this out?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is Stephanie Queen, City Manager, and I'd like to welcome Sean Corn, who's the Associate Vice President at HGR, and he and his team performed the rate study. We also have here in the chambers with us in person Mike Allen, our Utility Manager, Melanie Imholt Finance Director, and Kyle Cornelis, Public Works Director, and they participated in providing data and information for the study as well. It's been the last three years, we have not had any rate changes to the water or wastewater utility rates, and it's standard best practice to periodically do this type of evaluation to ensure that the needs of the utility are being met by the revenues brought in. And so with that, Sean, I'm gonna welcome you and turn it over to you, and you'll have control to put your slides on if you want to take control. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. I will share my screen here, and hopefully you all can see the PowerPoint presentation. So as the City Manager noted, what we're doing is going through a water and wastewater utility rate study, and we really like to look at this every so often to evaluate the level of the current rates and develop a funding plan for future capital improvements and annual ongoing maintenance and operations expenses. This evening, I'll talk real briefly about the purpose of the study, talk about how we establish rates for the water and sewer utilities, walk you through the results of the water and sewer rate study, and then take feedback, input, answer questions, and have any discussions that the council would like to have as we review the analysis. So really, when we think about the purpose of a rate study, I try and boil it down into a couple key pieces. The first and probably the most important piece of a rate study is evaluating the adequacy of existing rates. And that's in reflecting the overall operations and maintenance needs as well as those capital funding needs. So as we think about maintaining the system, improving the system, the costs associated with that on an annual basis over a multi-year period. Based on that analysis, then we can develop a rate transition plan to reflect those rate revenue needs that are necessary to support the operating and capital needs. Another goal of a rate study is to develop proportional and cost-based rates, and that really goes to the point of evaluating how you charge each customer class, and are they paying their quote "fair" share of the cost based on how they use the system? And then ultimately, as we go through this, there's also another handful of key financial metrics that we want to look at. The first one being maintaining prudent reserve funds, another one being annual renewal and replacements of existing infrastructure. So reinvesting in the system to maintain the systems. And then also a debt service coverage, so the credit check for each of the utilities as we go through this process. And these three are the highlights that we really focus on, and there's a couple reasons for that. One is they're important for the financial health of each utility. But secondly, as you go through the process of funding capital improvement plan projects, then when you go even with the state low-interest loan program, they do that credit check on the utility or on the city as you go through that. And two of these, the first one, the prudent reserve levels, and the last one, the debt service coverage ratios, are key components of that process when they evaluate what that overall program's going to look like for the city through the state programs for funding capital improvement. So we really wanted to focus on those two, but we also think about making sure that we're adequately reinvesting in the system. So as we go through this process, there is a generally accepted approach. The two manuals here are kind of the industry standard manuals. The one on the left is the American Waterworks Association, and one manual, the one on the right, is the Water Environment Federation Manual Practice Number 27, and they give us an approach and outline of how we should think about establishing rates. Now, they're not cookbooks. They don't tell us exactly how to go through and process and develop a rate study, but they provide the basis of how to evaluate the overall approach to establishing cost-based rates. Both of these manuals talk about a three-step process: a revenue requirement, a cost of service, and a rate design. In simple terms, the revenue requirement is the financial plan. It's the funding of that annual operating and capital needs over a multi-year period and the determination of the overall revenue needs to support that plan. The cost of service looks at how we serve each of our different customer types. So thinking about, is there a difference to serve a single-family home on the system versus a commercial versus a business versus a restaurant versus a grocery store? Are there cost differences based on that? And so we go through this process to evaluate how each customer class, whether it's residential, multifamily, commercial, and evaluate how they use the system, and then allocate and distribute costs based on how they use the system. And then given the results of the overall revenue needs and how we should collect those costs through the cost of service, we can develop proposed rates to support the analysis. So for the city study for the water and sewer utilities, we completed all three steps of this process and developed the analysis to support that. So I'll walk through each of those three steps briefly, hit the highlights for you, and then come back and review kind of those final study recommendations. As I've mentioned, the revenue requirement really simply compares the revenues to the expenses, and I'll get into a little bit of the detail on the next slide as part of that. And we determine the overall revenue needs to support each utility on a standalone basis while meeting our financial metrics. So our debt service coverage ratios, our prudent reserve levels. As we go through this, we focus on water revenue and water expenses, and we focus on sewer revenues and sewer expenses, understanding that you have a utility fund, which is the water and sewer, but our goal is to evaluate the difference of fund, the rates specifically for the water customers and the rates specifically for the sewer customers. And that excludes any transfers from any other city funds as part of that. And our goal is to develop a plan where rates support the annual operating and capital needs of each utility. Now, we do that using what's known as the cash basis approach. It's a generally accepted method for establishing rates for municipal utilities such as the city's two utilities, and it really aligns nicely to the budgeting process. So it looks at the costs in each individual year and the revenues that are necessary to fund that operating and capital need. So as we started developing the revenue requirement, our focus was on the fiscal year '22 and '23 budgets, so we had our starting point. We then projected that out through fiscal year 2028 based on assumed escalation factors. So we looked at the different types of costs that each utility incurs, whether that's salaries or materials and supplies and all the costs that go into supporting the water and sewer utilities, and developed a projection. Our average inflationary factor or escalation factor was 4.4% per year. So as I'm sure all of you are aware, when we just had another notice of inflation, that was, I think, 7.1% overall in the economy. Again, this is projecting out over the long term as part of that. So we've taken into account in the early year some of those adjustments that are necessary based on the current conditions and then a long-term projections. As part of this, we did not include any additional O&M above and beyond those current two budgets, and we also reduced the O&M by 5% to reflect the projected lapse. So just the timing of the expenses as we go forward, what's actually incurred and funded each year of the project, of the projected years. We then took the current capital plans and developed a capital funding analysis within the revenue requirement. So looking at those annual capital needs in each year, how we're going to pay for those capital projects. And we also included an escalation on those capital projects out through this through 2028 at approximately 3% per year. So trying to capture the increase in cost that we're seeing as part of this process. So starting with the water capital improvement plan, what you'll see here on this slide is a list of those projects in each of those years. So as an example, in 2023, we had Reedout Avenue and Smith Way improvements. In '24, we have Skate Park Water League. '25, we have the Wellsea Treatment Upgrade. '26, Marydale Avenue, the new Well Booster Station. And then '27 and '28, we have average future capital needs and rate study as part of that. The graph gives you an idea of how we're funding those projects in each year. So each of those bars, as we go out through '23 through '28, represents the funding approach. So the dark bar, black bar on the bottom, is our annual rate-funded capital. That's that reinvestment in the system each year on an annual basis. In this case, the green bar in 2025 is long-term borrowing. So that's a low-interest loan assumption, and that is in place to fund the Wellsea Treatment Upgrade as well as carrying some of that revenue into the second year. That's the blue bar where we say we're using reserves to fund a portion of the new Well Booster Pumps site selection. So as we go through this, what we look at is those capital projects in each year, as I mentioned, and then how do we pay for those and what impact to rates may that have? Now, in this case, we have our annual rate-funded capital, the dark bar on the bottom in each of those years. And then we have additional long-term debt, the low-interest loan, the green bar, that then comes back up and we need to fund that on an annual basis. So as we look at all the components of our revenue requirement, both our operating and capital needs, it's summarized in this chart. So in each year, our dark black bar is the annual O&M expenses. So that's that budgeted '22, '23, and then projected that out through 2028. Then we add to that our rate-funded capital, so what's going, that bottom bar on the prior slide, what's being reinvested in the system each year. And then our net debt service. So as I mentioned, in 2025, we're looking at a low-interest loan to fund Wellsea and the Booster Pump Site Selection Project. So in 2026, we would incur additional long-term debt. And for the water utility, that's the only debt that we would have, is that those two project funding needs. And then the orange you see starting out in '26, '27, and '28, that is actually putting money to reserves to maintain target reserves as part of this process. The dashed line is our current level of revenues. So you can see that's kind of slightly increasing through 2026, and then it declines slightly and flattens out. Now, that decline is when we use reserves to fund projects in 2026. So we lose about $20,000 of interest income, and so that's enough in this chart on the water utility that we can see that little change in our total revenues. So in order to adequately fund our operating and our capital, whether that's rate-funded capital or annual debt service payments, along with any reserve funding for future-year capital or to maintain adequate reserve levels, we need to tip that dashed line up to the top, and I'll talk about how we get there here in a moment. One of the key criteria or financial metrics that we look at as we go through this is reserve funds. So as we've been developing the study, we've established some minimum target reserve levels. And again, as I mentioned, this is a key element when you look out to issue long-term debt, whether it's with state low-interest loan programs or other funding sources. They do that health check, that financial health check. And so one of those is on reserves, what is an adequate and reasonable level of reserves. What we've done is looking at the analysis is developed a operating and capital fund need and a minimum reserve for each of those. And so one of the targets that we have for our annual O&M, and actually I messed up that 90 days here, that should be 180 days of O&M. So our minimum target operating reserve is 180 days of our annual O&M. So that's our minimum target, and that's right where this black bar in the chart is running in each of those years. So we're meeting that minimum target. For our capital minimum target, there's, one of the ways to establish that is to look at what is our annual average capital needs over a multi-year period. So looking at our next five years, how much revenue do we need to have on hand for capital, for one year's worth of capital? And you can see that that runs at about $700,000. And you can see the green bar, which is the total. That's our minimum target, both 180 days of O&M plus one year of annual average capital over the next five-year period. And what you can see is we're kind of ramping up reserves as we go, and then we use all those reserves in 2026 to fund capital projects, and then we maintain our target minimum level out through 2028. On the sewer side, same approach. Looking at our total O&M, our total capital funding approach, this is the Sewer Wastewater Capital Improvement Plan. So in '23, we have a couple bigger projects. The Biosol's De-watering Project, we have Whistle Hill Sewer Line Project. For the next several years, we have some average capital needs that we're funding. And then in '25, we have another larger project, the pH Control at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. And then out in '27, we have our refurbished Headworks Building. Again, the same colors apply here. The black bar at the bottom of each year is our rate-funded. So that's what's coming annually through the revenues to the sewer utility or wastewater utility to fund projects. The green is again low-interest loans. So for the de-watering system project, we're estimating a low-interest loan to fund that as well as in 2027 for the Headworks Building. All other projects are funded through existing reserves as we move forward or through annual rate-funded capital. So same bar chart here. The black bar is our annual O&M expense, starting with that '22 and '23 budget projected out through 2028. The green is our rate-funded capital. That's that annual reinvestment. And then the blue is our annual debt service. Now, on the wastewater side, we have existing debt service that goes out through 2028. And then we also have the borrowing for the de-watering system, and then the head works out in 2027. So a little bit more debt service there. And then the orange is putting funds into reserves. So what you can see here, very similar to water. In 2023, our revenues are equaling our expenses. So that's a good thing, but as we go out over time with the capital funding needs, annual O&M expenses, debt service, then you can see our current revenues fall short of funding all of those project costs as over the time period. Very similar approach on the reserves for wastewater. Again, that should say 180 days, I apologize, for O&M. So that's the black part of this chart on the bottom of this graph, running at about $600,000, increasing up to, I think it's about $770,000 over the timeframe based on the O&M. And then one year of annual average capital needs for the blue or the top part of that chart. And then our green bar shows our minimum target, where we should be to meet 180 days of O&M plus one year of average capital. So you can see over this timeframe, we need to increase our reserve levels to meet that minimum target. So we're below it, and then by 2028, with the assumptions we built into the analysis and the proposed adjustments to revenue, we meet that overall need. So in order to do that, meet our minimum target reserve levels, adequately fund our capital, maintain a sufficient debt service coverage ratio, and take the dashed line and tip it up so it touches the top of each of those bars on our revenue requirement, then we are looking at rate adjustment needs for each of the utilities. The top chart is the water utility, and what you can see in the years going across, 2023 through 2028, the rate adjustments, so in this case, 5% a year over, so 5% increase in each year. Then you can see the flat single-family rate, which is the majority of your customers, and then the bill difference. So what's that total change in each of those years? So you can see at 5% a year, that bill would go from $30.64. In 2024, that would increase to $32.17 or $1.53 a month increase. And then about that same increase, right, increasing up to $1.86 per year in year 2028, and then the increase in the total water bill over the five years. Very similar approach on the wastewater side. So looking at no change in 2023, but 6% annually in each of the next five years to fund our operating and capital needs. And then again, looking at the change in the flat single-family rate, which is your vast majority of your customers, you can see that increase from the bill at $65.30 today, increasing over the five-year period based on that revenue projection need. So once we know that overall revenue need, we can go into the cost of service to proportionally distribute those costs. And really what we look at as we go through this process is to, so that our revenues track our costs. So if there's some cost drivers, customers driving specific costs on your system, they should pay for those costs. And when we think about this, on the water side, we're looking at average demand versus peak demand. On the wastewater side, it's looking at overall volumes that are coming to the treatment plant plus the strength of that volume. So if we have customers that have significantly higher strength levels, it becomes harder and more expensive to treat, and we want to make sure those customers are paying their proportional share of those costs. We developed that cost of service based on the 2024 revenue requirement. And when we look at the customer classes, for water, we're looking at single-family, multifamily, and commercial slash irrigation. For wastewater, we're looking at residential and commercial. So we've got some slightly different customer classes, very typical, very normals. We start looking at the different categories between water and wastewater utilities. We went through the process of allocating and distributing the costs to each of the different cost components and that, excuse me, to each of the different customer classes of service. The result showed that there were minimal differences. So at this point, we're recommending no cost-of-service adjustments. So what that means is that the 5% or 6% for water and sewer respectively, we just talked about, that is the change for all customers. If we saw significant changes in the cost of service, that may mean that one customer group, residential or commercial as an example, may have to go up higher or less than that 5% or 6%. In this case, we're not seeing that, so that 5% and 6% can be applied across the board to all customer classes. So when we design our rates, we look at that overall percentage adjustment and revenue changes. There's no cost-of-service adjustments. We look at how you're charging your customers through that rate structure, and then we develop rates that reflect those revenue requirement needs and any cost-of-service adjustments so that they're cost-based and proportional. So when we looked at your current rate structure, you have un-metered and metered rates for each of the utilities. The meter side has a fixed charge by meter size and then a variable consumption charge based on water use. It's a uniform rate, so it's the same rate for all water consumption. There is no fixed charge for irrigation customers, only the usage or consumption rate. The un-metered rates are then based on an average consumption to develop that flat rate that those customers are charged. As we went through this, we talked about different methods, how we maybe think about charging customers. In the end, we're recommending maintaining those current rate structures, those current customer classes of service, and given no change in the cost of service, that it's an across-the-board adjustment. So each rate will increase by the overall adjustment of each of the year for each year based on the results of the revenue requirement. So what would that look like for, again, the vast majority of your customers, a single-family, un-metered rate? You can see here, we have a comparison, the current rate for Soldatna, 2023 and 2024. Then we have some comparisons to Homer, Palmer, Wasilla Sewer, and Kenai. And you can see the blue bar, the first bar on the left, that's the water rate on its own. The green bar or the middle bar for each city is the sewer rate. And then the orange bar is the combined water sewer bill. So just taking those first two bars and stacking them on top of each other. So what you can see here is you compare very nicely to these utilities and really pretty cost-competitive with those utilities that are nearest to you as part of this. So with that, to summarize, then, you know, we are looking at the need to adjust water and sewer rates to adequately fund our annual operating and maintenance expenses as well as our capital funding needs. We are recommending no changes in the cost of service and maintain that current rate structure and recommend an across-the-board rate adjustment for each of the customer rate schedules that are in place today. So with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor and council for any questions, discussions, or whatever you would like. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Curry?
Thank you, and I appreciate very much all the information you provided. And if my questions reflect a lack of knowledge, please assist me in asking questions correctly. To begin with, I noticed on, what is your slide nine, the average increase of 4.4% for both of the water and the sewer. Is that actually an average of the two? Are those two actually increasing in cost by exactly that 4.4, 4.4? Or is one more than the other and you're averaging?
I will double-check that. I don't have that on my cheat sheet over here. It's probably slightly different for each, simply because we look at specific costs. So like the salary costs are going up equally for each. But if one of the utilities has a higher, you know, materials and supplies line item that's going, both going up at 3%, that percentage would increase. So I can get back to you on that, but I believe it's close, but it's not exact.
Thank you. And can I?
Go ahead.
Good. And part of, in looking at that on slide 16, where we're looking at the rate adjustments moving forward the next five, six years, again, on water it was 5%, on wastewater it's 6%. And so again, I was wondering, what's the differential between the 4.4? And yet the increases are going to be five, excuse me, the study would show a need for increases of 5% versus 6%? Am I mixing apples with apples?
No, that's a good point and good question. So when we look at the water side of the equation, then really that difference, that half a percent, I'll call it, in each of those years, the difference between the 4.4 and the 5% is really there for the capital funding. We're able to maintain adequate reserve targets. We actually have reserves that we use to fund our capital. So that differential is just kind of keeping up and funding our ongoing capital needs. On the wastewater side, that one and a half percent, I'll call it differential, is really looking at funding our capital needs and our, through annual debt service, right? We're increasing our debt service as well as upping or increasing our reserves to meet our target levels. So they're similar, but good question on they're not exactly the same. They're funding slightly different components. Wastewater's a little more focused on that annual debt service need and reserves, whereas water's more just kind of maintaining the system and upping our capital funding as we go over time.
Continuing then, and thank you, and I appreciate very much your helping us. My experience for 30 years was dealing with My experience for thirty years was dealing with Homer Electric Association and the idea of supplying electrons. We knew of such things as line loss. And although again, we generated, but again, as we distributed and we end up with some things that we could not in fact, uh, charge, we couldn't meter. Does our water and sewer have any comparable component? Is there a percentage of what we provide that in fact would be comparable to line loss? It'd be again, non-ability to in fact, provide a charge for, for some of what we produce. Is there anything comparable? Is there any water loss, any sewer loss that we aren't able to charge for?
On, on the water side, the answer is yes, we have unaccounted for water. So that is leaks in the system, meter slowing down, you know, hydrant flushing, all those things that we do as part of our maintenance of the system. So we have a very comparable and that's built into our assumptions and our analysis as part of this. So I'll work with Mike to get you a, a good percent on, on that piece of it. I don't have that in front of me, you know, because we built that into our analysis. On the sewer side, it's actually the opposite. On the sewer side, we don't have losses per se, although there could be leaks in the sewer pipes where we lose wastewater. But generally speaking, we actually gain more wastewater than what comes from our homes and businesses through infiltration, inflow and infiltration. And that's leaks in the pipe where the rainwater, the snow melt, all that makes its way into the sewer system. So there's actually more wastewater to treat at the plant than what your residents and businesses develop or contribute to the system.
Excellent. I never thought of that again with electricity, you never get somewhere that you're getting electricity into the system. That's interesting.
You don't get to make more.
And as, as you work to get that, I would be interested to see what the trend is in terms of on the water, in terms of is there a higher percentage of what we're losing as compared? And so maybe over the last three years, you know, how is that moving? The next thing, and just in my understanding, my lack of understanding, trying to understand more, on commercial, uh, water and wastewater, it would seem that we have sort of a one-size-fits-all. And what I was wondering, is there no economy of scale? Is, is a larger commercial interest, is there not some savings? And again, I think of, we have a couple of large stores as compared to a smaller commercial in terms of having it the same. Is there, is there no economy of size?
There can be on the water side, but it's generally when we get into a very large water user, and I'll think of something like a food processor where they're running, you know, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five days a year, where they're, they're using a flat amount of water. It's a lot of water, but it's a flat amount because one of the key drivers on the water system is meeting those peak day needs. So we have to make the pipes bigger because water is heavier and denser and we've got to make room for it when we have those peak days. So in the summer, when everybody's watering their lawn, you know, getting ready for the Fourth of July picnic, we want it green. That's the cost driver we see on water. So it's really more driven on the, on the extreme side for the water where we start seeing any calculatable, I'll say, economies of scale where that rate would actually go down. When we think about the typical commercial customers, it's really pretty basic. There's not a huge differential. There is some, but we also capture a portion of that on the metered side and on the un-metered side with our meter size charge. So the larger the meter, the higher the fixed charge they pay to reflect some of that capacity or those demands that they're going to place on the system.
Excellent. Last question, I greatly appreciate your, your scope of knowledge. In most things where you do rates, there are some philosophic issues of whether or not to sort of be conservative in your estimates or not as conservative. As you looked at in doing this study and projecting what was needed, would you say are the increases conservative, which would, conservative to me would, I mean that they're higher because you want to be sure everything is covered? Or are they more moderate in terms of, well, we know we'll have some things, but not all? Do you have a philosophic predisposition in determining rates of being more conservative or more moderate?
I, I do, and, and, and I think generally speaking, I'm more conservative. I would rather, you know, Melanie and Mike and others come back to you and say, Sean was crazy on his escalation factors. We don't need a six, we can get away with a four. That's kind of my general philosophy that I go with. Having said that, I think in this case where we're sitting today, I would lean towards we're more moderate. And the reason I say that is we've built in a five percent lapse in ONM from the budget number. So that took a little bit of our conservatism out of there. I'm also not sure how long we're going to be in this high inflation period. And, and that's why I probably lean more to the, to be moderate on this one. Just because we, we're still at seven point one percent on a, you know, for the economy as an inflationary index. I'm still talking with folks about project costs increasing fairly significantly, you know, from when they bid it or designed it to when they go out to actually build it along with supply chain issues that we're still seeing. So I'm going to lean more moderate today. If we did this study in the, in another year and things were back to normal, whatever we call that now, or whatever that looks like now, I maybe would lean more conservative, but right now I'm on the moderate side.
Thank you for using my terms, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, I likewise have a lengthy list of questions here, so I'll start at the top. First of all, I'm grateful to hear that we are fairly competitive as compared to other municipalities in our region when it comes to offering these services to our residents. But one question I would have is, as far as how we're structuring those rates and placing the burden to support this system on those ratepayers, we have designed this to where our utility ratepayers bear a hundred percent of the cost of receiving those utility services. Can you think of any other examples of municipalities elsewhere that might subsidize the cost of providing those services with revenues outside of those ratepayers? For example, we've, we've done quite well as a city with our, our sales tax revenues in the last year. So potentially would there be any possibility of taking sales tax revenue, injecting it into the utility fund and reducing utility costs for our ratepayers? I'm just curious if there's precedent that you've seen with other municipalities for doing something like that?
Sales tax generally, no. I have seen it, I'll call it a handful of times. And, and the one example I do have where I was involved in it, they actually, Pat went through a whole vote process with the city to approve an additional tax to pay for a specific debt issuance to fund a project. That, that's the only one I have in my, my book here where I've done that. Where I see it most frequently is with special purpose districts, not so much cities, but where we have a water or sewer district down in the lower forty-eight where we'll take and they'll use property tax. But generally speaking, when we look at water and sewer, stormwater, garbage, the general utilities as enterprise funds, then they're generally self-sustaining. So there's very rarely that infusion of cash from other city funds or other outside funds, unless it's specific to water and sewer service.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Looking at the CIP for wastewater, I think it was in page thirteen, your slides, and also page ten for the CIP for water. We recently, specifically looking at item three in FY twenty-three, the Whistle Hill Sewer Line, this was something that came before our council this last year, where this was a large capital project that hadn't been planned for, hadn't been budgeted. And as a council, we were supportive of this project, but again, this is money that we hadn't planned on spending. And when we approve it, that money for this project is now coming out of the utility fund and the onus of funding that is on our ratepayers. This was a concern we discussed as a body at that point in time. And I think it was, it was brought up in the discussion that although we have a CIP with all these projects that we'd like to do, I, I think I was told that we don't necessarily always implement everything on a CIP. It's kind of like a, a rolling list of soft targets that we're shooting for and we're always reprioritizing, but not likely to always do all of them. Is this rate plan that is being proposed, am I to understand correctly that if we were to adopt this as it's proposed, we can now fund all of the projects on the wastewater and water CIPs for the next five years potentially?
Based on our plan right now, assuming ONM revenue levels coming in, my answer to that would be yes. We would be able to issue the long-term debt, in this case, looking at sewer for the de-watering system and for the headworks project and fund those with those six percent increases on the water side at, where the plan sits today. You know, depending on what happens in the next five years with inflation, project costs, et cetera, that would be my only caveat to that response.
Thank you, Sean, this is Stephanie. I'm going to add one more caveat, which is that when Melanie communicated, maybe two, when Melanie communicated the capital project list, she assumed that we will be receiving the federally designated spending, which has not yet made it through the finish line of federal Congress.
Got it.
So we're waiting for that bill and we're hopeful, but there's more than two million dollars that we are assuming with this rate study that we will be receiving. We don't have that final confirmation yet. So that is one assumption that would, might push it back in the other direction. And then the other one is, as, as Sean referenced earlier, the uncertainty in our cost estimating. And a good example of this is our de-watering project, which is the highest priority project that we've talked a lot about. In our current five-year capital plan, which we updated in July, we had that listed, I think, for one point something million. And then shortly after, the newer engineer estimate is, is between three and four million. So we did make, we did communicate that higher number to Sean, but that's just an example of one project. So we have flexibility in terms of the timing in the council. Every single year, as you mentioned, we'll establish capital priorities for that year. And that gives the council the opportunity to push some of these projects out further, which is, as you mentioned, normal. That's kind of our normal process. Just wanted to mention those other assumptions that are built in. Thanks.
And if I may, I will note that that six percent analysis is at the two point something million dollars for that de-watering project. So I've, I've got some scenarios I'm working with Mike on to, to run that. As an example, if we were to run it at the three to four million dollars, we would most likely have to shift that project out probably a year, if not two. And then that would push at that level, borrowing for that project at that time, it would add, it'd be about a seven and a half percent annual increase to fund that at those levels. So there is that side of it as well, if those project costs continue to increase, then that's going to push up on our funding.
Certainly when you're planning through FY twenty-eight, you can't always assume that those costs are going to exist in years out. So I, I do completely understand that, thank you. And I, I still have two more questions, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
So I know that we provide water and sewer to some locations outside the city. Do they get charged the same as the city residents?
Councilmember Hutchings, yes. So our, our current code, the agreements that are in place with those properties outside the city reference the code sections that establish rates. So they pay the same rates as city residents do. However, many of those agreements also have an in lieu of property tax, which is an additional component that they pay to the city per the negotiated agreements.
If I may again, and weren't those agreements also written with the idea that they would annex? And so in that agreement was the potential of annexation as well as their water and sewer fees? Is that correct?
Ms. Hutchings, that is correct.
So in other words, we are keeping up our side of the bargain and they are not? Is that what you're telling me?
To answer that question, I don't think I'm saying that necessarily, but I will say, I don't know if as part of this analysis, we looked at the possibility of establishing differential rates for properties inside the city versus outside. But we know that legally, that's something we could do. It just wasn't incorporated as part of this exercise.
Okay. And I have one more question. I know that sewer charges, when it's not for a home, is predicated on how much water you use. So we are putting in a sewer line to Whistle Hill. How are we going to determine what their sewer charge is going to be since they have their own well?
I'm just gonna...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry, Sean. Mike Allen in the room just was explaining that we're, we can have the ability to meter their well to look at their own onsite water consumption and make that same assumption that the water they use then ends up in our sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker, do you have any questions?
Thank you, and thank you HGR for the presentation. The questions that I had were answered by the city manager or were asked by Councilmember Chilson or Carey. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I have two more, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Maybe this is more for Mike and/or Kyle. So looking back at the CIP for water, I think it's on third year of that. We have well C, active filtration. Is that the, kind of a sand filtration, kind of like what Kenai has with theirs to pull stuff out? So we would have to do Aquamag with water?
No, it's great, kind of like a green sand filter.
Mike to the mic.
That would be the addition of a green sand filter and that would help address the copper and zinc issues that we're having.
Okay, and roughly what percentage of our water supply is coming from well C?
Right now, probably eighty-five, ninety percent.
Okay, so that would get vast majority of the water then. Perfect. Okay, thank you. And then last question, just trying to build understanding as to why we do metering for some of our customers and unlimited for other customers. If we're going to bill unlimited for a number of our customers, even though we have meters on others, is there any reason why we don't just say, we know you have a meter, but we're just going to give you unlimited water and just say, use what you want, we just charge everyone the same, so it's fair for all?
That's an interesting question. Go ahead, Mike.
I'll say that, I don't, that was set up when I got here. So at some point, the council decided that's how they wanted to set the meter rates up. Historically, I don't, I wouldn't be able to answer.
So if we wanted to transition to simplified billing model where just all residential ratepayers pay the same rate? Doesn't matter if you have a meter or not, we're just going to just not take a reading. You just, you just get unlimited water like every other resident. Would that be a decision that we as a council make or how would we make that change?
So through the mayor, I'll speak to that a little bit. So what we can bring forward in the next packet, so this purpose of the presentation was to allow HGR to present, but we are going to invite Sean to attend the meeting when we come back with a formal recommendation for the council's consideration. And at that point, we'll make sure that we communicate and we can share it ahead of time, the rate structures in terms of the residential and the commercial and the metered versus the non-metered. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but residential is not required to be metered. And that was the case with commercial. And then at some point, the city implemented new regulations requiring new commercial construction to be metered. So the trend has actually been in the other direction. On the commercial side, which is where we had un-metered commercial and we're, are slowly, as, as projects transition, getting more of those commercial folks onto the metered system. But we could, we've got four slides that we can email out after this meeting that show those different rates, both metered and un-metered, residential and commercial, and be happy to share that.
Okay, thank you.
I have kind of a follow-up question to that. Would it be cost-effective for the city to start metering all those residents that are on metered right now?
Cost-effective, that's a big, big question, Mayor. Installing meters at every house would have to go into the basements or crawl spaces of all the homes. That would be a, a big undertaking.
But but again, is it, is it going to be, are we going to find if we started doing that, that those on-metered residents right now are paying less than the fair share?
It's possible.
I was on meter, well, I've been on, in my old home, I was on metered for the whole time. And, and, see, I built that in nineteen eighty-eight. So in nineteen eighty-nine, I was paying sixteen, sixteen dollars and about sixty cents a month for water. So over that's what, thirty-some years, it's doubled. And I'm not sure that's, in my own mind, if that's a sufficient amount, that maybe it should be more. So something for everyone to take a look at in the...
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, Anchorage looked at that several years ago, probably ten years ago. They did a pretty intensive analysis of it. And what Mike mentioned on the cost associated with going into each of the individual homes, for them at that point in time, kind of outweighed the benefit of actually going to metering and having to bill, you know, monthly for all of those versus just that flat rate. So at that point in time, and this is probably about ten years ago, maybe twelve now, they determined it, it wasn't going to work for them. And so I think as, as regulations change, that may be a discussion that you all may have, you know, in the next five, ten years, but at this point in time, you know, the cost of putting meters in in each home is going to be fairly substantial as we've looked at that with, you know, some other entities around the, the country, you know, for the, that meter setup and then... You know, for the, that meter setup and then that ultimate cost of the meter and then the billing piece of it. Just, just kind of as a piece of information for y'all.
Well, nineteen eighty seven, when I was living in Fairbanks, we were metered. And um, and of course, that's a, a whole different environment than we have down here. And of course, the sewage was also based on that meter. And I'm, my recollection is we, was pretty substantial, pretty substantial charges up there. Okay, thank you. Uh, no further questions. We'll adjourn this uh work session at this point in time. Uh, thank you, Mr. Crohn or Corn for uh attending. Um, and we'll be looking forward to something coming from the administration here in the very near future.
And we'll.
Thank you all.
And we'll get back into our regular session uh starting at six o'clock.